Hey everybody, welcome back to another off the beaten path, off our normal lane episode of Dadcast. It's kind of a rebuttal to the episode we did with our Josephine County Commissioner a few days ago. I am your host JP, joined as always as your co-host Mr. Nick Martin. Nick, how are you today?
I'm good. How are you, man?
Good, man. Doing great. I actually, I got my negative COVID test back. So there you go, vaccinated, masked up, still negative. We're doing good. Joining us today for what we're looking to be a rebuttal episode to what you may or may not have seen earlier is a business owner, Mr. Bradley Converse. How are you, sir?
Been great. Thanks for having me on, guys.
Absolutely. And city council member on the Illinois Valley here in Southern Oregon, part of Josephine County. Mr. Jesse Dugas, how are you, sir?
Doing well. Thanks for having me.
Absolutely. All right. Well, and so I don't make the same mistake as well. You guys are dads. I heard three and three and four.
Yeah, I got four ranging from 20 to a year and a half.
Wow. So you're in the same boat as Nick.
Nope.
That's good. Congrats, man. We'd, I'd love to have you guys back when it's a little more lighthearted. To discuss that whole journey ending, but here we go, Nick. I leave it up to you, good sir, that conscious years. I will obviously interject where I see fit. I'm sure I will. And let's do it.
Cool. Okay. So the point of these episodes are to basically just spread awareness of we need as a community to do something. We did interview Herman Berchiger a couple of days ago and it was good. You know, he, we agreed that yeah, stay home if you, if you can limit your trips, mask up if you can. And get the, get the vaccine, but you know, seek medical attention, seek medical advice. So anyway, basically I want to get the take of somebody that works in the schools, somebody that works in town as a business owner, how big of a crisis is this in your opinion? Sorry. Yeah. Go ahead.
I'll take it. I mean, it's, it's bad. I, early on, like back in, you know, March of 2020, I was kind of banging the drum like this is really, really bad potentially. And I mean, a lot of people back then didn't see it and couldn't see it. There's some people that still don't see it. But my wife, she was a nurse in the hospital and she didn't have a mask during the pandemic because they didn't have supplies. So yeah, early on, it's always a big deal. We kind of got out of it for the past couple of months, just with vaccines and with just kind of, we kind of had the bug figured out and then Delta hits and things got bad really fast. So again, with banging the drum early on, you know, late July, early August, like we're, we're in dire straits with our low vaccination rates. We just had our daughter two and a half weeks ago at the hospital and we had all sorts of random people coming in, taking care of us, which were great for us because it was actually like more qualified people, but the whole staffing there is just a mess. The, the hospital, ICUs are just shock full. We're trying to be as careful as possible so we don't trip and fall and have to go to the ER because it's, it's packed. So it's a, it's a big problem locally right now.
All right, Jesse?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with Brad. We're dealing with the same thing out here. I, we've lost a couple of people as recently within the last couple of weeks that passed away due to COVID. Out here in the valley and, and it's, it's a much tighter group out here. You know, Cave Junction has a populace somewhere around that 2200 mark. But when you, when you include the valley as a whole, there's, there's much more than that. And it's, it's scary. You know, I'm, I'm finding families on a daily basis that are quarantined and I have it. My entire family was quarantined just last week. I got off on Tuesday from, from an exposure that we had at preschool. And so it's, it's a situation where, where it is definitely hitting home. It's bad. I mean, it's real. I agree. There are still people out here that don't think it's real and have turned that page to trying to make it more political. I don't think it's a political thing. I think it is, it's something that everybody needs to hunker down and, and figure out how to navigate through together. Because right now there's, there's way too much of a division for anything to be successful.
Right. And speaking on that division, I'd just like to, to jump in here now. Now this question may be next to impossible to answer, but I'm going to ask it anyway. I don't have an answer. I have ideas. But you always going to have the other side. So the people who are going to oppose any possibility of a shutdown. It's, you know, it's our freedoms are being taken away. You're, you're, you're hurting business owners. It's just not right. The mental capacity of people, it's affecting them. But what's the answer in your guys' opinion to? If we were to shut down, if we had the power to shut down Josephine County, Jackson County, just two, three weeks to slow that curve, what is your statement to those who would object to that?
I'd kind of go first. There's a lot of restaurants and businesses that had to shut down due to COVID. I know so many that, you know, local wrapping company had to shut down. I heard they had 40 some people or they had several dozen people sick and they lost one of their employees to COVID. So they shut down. Walmart had to get shut down for a while because they were completely covered. All these shutdowns that they're going to happen one way or the other. Either the government's going to implement it before it's necessary, which feels like it wasn't necessary. Or the business is going to have to do it to themselves after the fact. And you kind of blew our shot early on, you know, keeping things shut down for so long when it just wasn't that prevalent here. Shutdowns are very necessary at a certain time, but when you do it when it's not necessary, it just burns people out. And so a lot of businesses couldn't easily withstand one of that. You've also got restaurants that can't get supplies because of the Cisco shutdown. And it's, it's a complicated mess where we have shutdowns happening. Not artificially anymore. Like there, there are people getting very sick and dying that I had one of the local business owners. He's very well-known guy around here. He's in a coma right now and we, we really hope he makes it, but that's going to affect a lot of local businesses.
Restaurants been shut down for, I think the last two weeks now, which is a bummer.
Sorry. I mean, and it's not like, I mean, these are just fantastic people in the community that no one wishes ill upon them at all. Like our town is a better place having these people in it. And we are going to feel the repercussions to this for years. I mean, yeah.
Yeah. And it's, it's a bummer because his wife's a teacher. Like she's my kid's teacher and it's, and they're like super bummed out about it. So it's.
Sucks.
Yeah.
For me, it's a, you know, if it's a couple of week thing, then you can, you can try to pull the positives out of it. You know, number one, safety that comes out it right out to gave. But number two, there is such a staffing shortage right now of people, workers. And this, you know, a two-week break could give small businesses an opportunity to revamp, come up with a new game plan and what they're going to do. Come up with a recruiting campaign to grab employees, but ultimately those, those employees will return if we can get COVID out of the picture. And so it, it may take at some point a, a revamp or reboot. And I would, I would try to spin that and, you know, call it much more of a reboot. Get everything up where it needs to be. Get your security protocols in place. Understand what you're going to require as far as COVID goes. Separate from what the county and the state are going to require. And, and trying to come up with a new game plan, but you know, there's, I do agree. That's probably an impossible question. We were supposed to be through this by now, right? So they told us, hey, we get through this last wave and, and it's in the rearview mirror. We're good to go. And now our numbers are, are worse than they've ever been. And we don't have the mandates or the shutdowns that we did when it wasn't as bad as it is right now. And so it's, it's a tricky situation, but I know speaking for myself, I want to be here in six months. I want to be here in a year. I want to be here in five years. I definitely don't want COVID. And I don't want to take the chance to get in COVID and dying from COVID. And you know, I, I definitely don't want any of my family or close friends or, or any community, any more community members to, to be affected by it. So I would, as a small business owner, if I had to shut down, I was, I was shut down. I was shut down the last, you know, 10 days while I was on quarantine. Luckily because I'm vaccinated, I was able to, to get tested and get released off the quarantine early. But it's, you know, it's, it's just one of those things where you gotta, instead of fighting the system so damn much, do what's right.
Yep. I agree.
Tied to the hospital, like I posted on Facebook back in April 2020 saying, we need to open everything back up because we didn't have a whole lot of COVID in Josephine County at that point. And then just tie things to the hospital. If the hospital raises the alarm that we're going to be running out of the bed soon, that's when you shut things down. We're, we've run out of beds. We're maxed out and then some. Now would be the time to shut things down and tell our hospital to get to a level that they feel comfortable with, not just an arbitrary date. Like, you know, if we shut things down really hard and it's better in a week, great, open back up. But if we shut things down really hard and it takes a little while, we don't just go off arbitrary, arbitrary dates. We go, once we have this many people in the hospital with COVID and our ICU has capacity again, let's get right back to it. And not, and not dilly-dally, but the whole arbitrary dates thing, I think is what set a lot of people off of, you know, not wanting to do really anything. A lot of the government restrictions were just arbitrary in people's minds and that is hurting us now. Now is the time we need these things and people just don't want to do it.
Yeah, I agree. I think they, we stepped in or the government stepped in too hard, too fast and over-promised and under-delivered. And now we have a real crisis that is so much worse than it was originally. And we need a game plan. And from talking to Herman, I don't feel that there's a solid game plan. Like I suggested possibly opening up the pavilion at the fairgrounds as an offsite hospital, hospital to put in the patients from the hospital that can't leave yet. And I was told that the hospital refused to do that.
Well, and so I talked to Wayne about that and they're thinking, I don't want to say too much for him, but rough idea is there's beds that are in the nursing homes right now that could take a lot of these people. There's just not staff for it. So if we create a new area that needs to be staffed additionally with the food requirements and all that other stuff, you're, you still need that staff from somewhere. So you're not necessarily solving, the problem isn't one of space. It's one of staff.
And what about the, the medical staff that was sent in the, the emergent or the extra people? Here we've got.
Well, there was a national guard and there was healthcare. There's 500 some healthcare people sent around the state, which is going to help for sure. I don't know the specifics of it. I know the Fuentes received some of those and you know, that's definitely going to help. There's only so much we can do and talk about in regards to specific hospital policy that, you know, it's just kind of beyond our purview. But there's a lot we can do from just a community standpoint of raising the right awareness, stopping the misinformation and countering it. So that when people say things that are just factually inaccurate, you get on that pretty quick. And then, yeah, the schools is the one. I mean, I was, I called up my school, the, the principal today. I'm left the voice and I wait and hear back, but I'm with the mandate coming, that's just going to be, you know, I've heard a lot of the teachers at my school in the grade that my daughter's going into are unvaccinated, anti-vax. And so come October 18th, is it that those teachers are going to go to a distance learning? Is it that they're just going to be laid off for a year and we're going to bring in random substitutes? Like that's what I'm trying to figure out right now. And there's a big unknown there that.
I asked the same questions regarding my school or my children's school. I actually, this is week two in Medford School District. They have not gone to school yet. I'm planning on sending them back on Tuesday because apparently if they go 10 days without being, they get unenrolled. And even if I call and say, hey, look, this is what we're doing. We're not leaving. We're still here. They have to come back. So we'll put them back for a day, maybe a week, see how things go. And, but that, that's, that's scary, you know, and being unvaccinated in the same room, if it's one of those teachers, then again, your choice, but it's also my choice to not have my children exposed to possible, you know, infection and just it's a pickle, man. It's a pickle and there's no right answer.
Yeah. Um, yeah. Like we're still talking about not letting my, my 16-year-old go back to high school yet. Like kind of waiting it out for two weeks to see what happens as far as if there's going to be outbreaks of that kind of stuff. So it's just, because she's not vaccinated, she is against the vaccine. So which I, it's in, we're having that conversation of, hey, why? You know, she's a lot of influence from her church is going into her choice on the, on the vaccine thing, which is just, it's that's a whole nother topic we get into.
Yeah, I'm dealing with the same thing with my 14-year-old son who's a freshman. He's, he's not vaccinated and it's, he's extremely intelligent. But he, he's uneducated on the matter. So we've spent the last week trying to educate him with, with legit sources. So we feel at 14, with him being as independent, as smart as he is, that he should be part of that conversation. Yeah. But it's, it's, it has been ongoing.
It's what I'm finding to be rough is just all the stuff that the kids have gone through the last year and a half and all the in-your-face COVID and we're shutting you down. We're taking you out of school. We can't do this. My daughter's at the point where she just doesn't want to hear it anymore. So she doesn't want to have that conversation. So that's, that's kind of what we're dealing with. And it's, and I'm like, hey, you know, look at all the positives of, you know, what happened with me personally. I was in a car with JP when I had my first COVID something and he was vaccinated and he was fine. Your grandma and grandpa totally fine because they're vaccinated and they were around me before I knew I tested positive. So there's a lot, there's a lot of good things that come from it. It may not be a cure-all. Who knows? It, but it lessens the symptoms and it increases your chance of not catching it.
You know what? And it, it may not have worked at all, right? But maybe I'm immune to the thing. I don't know. But all I know is I was trapped in the car for eight hours with a guy who had COVID and I had the vaccine. We're, I mean, we're sitting this close to each other, talking to each other, breathing in each other's faces.
They can get it. Disclaimer, I had no idea that I had COVID. I had, that was it. So had I known, I would not have gotten in the car with JP. I would have stayed home and been responsible.
And you hear the stories and this one was confirmed, I think it was the New York Times, but there was a, right after COVID had hit here in the States. There were a group of, I think it was 15 people that were all staying in a ski lodge together. One person went in infected and within four days, 11 of those 15 were infected. And that was, uh, that was the original variant and that was pre-vaccination. So it's, I mean, the contagious level of it. And from what I was told, this version, you know, like before with the pre, I think they said it was like an R1, not a medical guy, but one-to-one transmission rate. And now it's like one to seven. So every, for every one person that's infected, they could possibly infect the seven people. So it's on average, that's, that's, those are scary numbers.
Right. Yep. Okay. Sorry, guys. I'm going through the, the questions over here. So kind of going back to the, the previous interview we did with, with Herman. Do you think we should issue a state of emergency on the county level? Cause according to, to the county commissioners, they are not going to issue a state of emergency. I don't, I don't understand enough to know that it does any, if it's going to do any good, if it's going to help, if it's just a, just a label, you know, I don't know.
Well, and that's, that's the question I would have is what would the, what's the end game there? So if we were, or the county commissioners were to grant, you know, a state of emergency for our county, what's the goal of that? What are you trying to do? Are you trying to do that to impose a shutdown at the county level versus at the state level? Is that why, you know, is that why that's in the discussion or is it a, or is it just a label? I think that's, that requires a more in-depth conversation.
Yeah. It could be just, you know, an optics thing. And Herman's response was that, you know, the state's already got that. So they don't need to do anything else. It is a lot of that's just the, the politics game. Herman's in a tough spot. There's so many people in this county that are not just ambivalent. They are very strongly anti-max, anti-vax. They're opposed to any government measures at all. And those are the ones who are showing up to the meeting, people that are trying to be responsible, wear masks, stay home. They're not going to the Wednesday commissioner meetings. It's 99% people that are yelling at these guys, telling them, do not do these things. That's what they have to go up against. So when, and then you've got a lot of people who are opposed to, or you know, are pro-vaccine, pro, you know, stay at home, pro-taking measures. They're, you know, doing a little bit of talking to these guys, but a lot of them are just, you know, blasting them on Facebook saying, these guys are terrible, you know, or writing letters to the commission, or letters to the paper, saying how terrible they are, but they're not getting the point across. I've spent hours with Herman and, and Dan on the phone, talking about this now, trying to come up with, you know, solutions that they could actually do that would move the, the needle even a little bit, but they're, they're in a tough spot.
I'm going to throw a disclaimer out though, you know, anything that we're saying regarding Herman, I totally appreciate him for jumping on and having the conversation with us. Every, I don't have anything negative against him. You know, the going back and forth on Facebook is stupid. If, like, if you have a question, reach out, have a conversation. The conversation went completely different than the perception of back and forth on Facebook. So going forward, I have nothing against Herman or any of our county commissioners. I'm just trying to get answers and educate people a little bit more. So I don't want anyone to take any of this conversation the wrong way, thinking that we're dogging on our county commissioners or we're dogging on whatever. That's, that's not.
I'm still dogging them a little bit. They, I was also on the phone with Dan early on and like, you know, last year and he just, there was one point I told him like, Dan, just look these things up. He's like, I don't use the internet. So they're not all like completely innocent. They, and you know, I went through and looked at all the videos of what they were, you know, you can just look at the recorded meetings. And for the past six months prior to, you know, them taking it even a little bit seriously, they were making jokes about it. They were comparing the sterilization equipment at the jail to stuff that the Nazis used against Jews. They were, they were not taking it seriously at all. So yeah, I'm glad that they're doing a little bit better, but I'm not going to sit here and say they've done a great job either. That, that would be false.
Well, on that note.
But yeah, we can, we, I mean, leaders are going to get more criticism than others. They have a lot more power than any of you. So if we are not going to hold our commissioners feet to the fire, then, I mean, like I'm still hopeful that they do some good things with this and, but you know, back in, you know, first part of August is when things really needed to shut down. When things needed to happen, when I was saying, guys, the dice cast, like it's, like I was doing Facebook posts back then saying, we're cooked. And it, it didn't even look that bad yet, but I was like, just looking at the numbers and the growth, we're cooked. And right now we're cooked.
From what I'm seeing too, is it's, it, we're going to get worse in the next two weeks and then it'll, it'll hit a little bit of a lull.
Well, and what's going to be, what's frustrating is you've got that vaccine mandate that Kate's putting out that is going to hit, you know, mid-October. By then Josephine County is gonna probably have reached herd immunity. You know, herd immunity is the goal for everything. You ideally want to reach that through vaccination because of the very low risks associated with vaccination. If you reach that through everybody getting COVID, COVID is very dangerous. As you know, a lot of us, we've all had friends and, you know, people either get it and become seriously sick or I've been into a COVID funeral. Like it's, it's a, a really rough way of getting to herd immunity. But we're not going to, there, there's no possible way we're going to be revving this high for months and months. There's just, there's no history of that. You know, you look to India, you look at all these different places that saw large spikes and the spike, it goes up and it comes back down. And then depending on how you stop that spike is going to determine what happens moving forward. So did you stop with vaccination? Did you stop it? If you stopped with vaccination, then you're just going to see a really low tail. If you stop, if you didn't stop it at all, then it's just going to spike and go back down. It's going to stay down pretty well. If you stopped it with a shutdown, then that's an artificial stop and you haven't reached herd immunity yet. So you're going to spike, you're going to come down. And then at some point it's going to go back up again because you still haven't reached herd immunity. So it, again, it's a very complex, complicated issue that, you know, in Josephine County, we're not going to get herd immunity with vaccine. It's just not going to happen.
The blowback that I can continue to get on a daily basis here seems to be that, well, no one saw this variant come in. So if we do everything we need to now to get the numbers lower, what happens to the, when the next variant comes out and the variant after that, and it continues to, to alter its internal DNA or whatever it's doing for the virus? And it's, I think that's feeding a lot of the people that aren't willing to get vaccinated, aren't willing to wear a mask. They, they're at that point where, you know, the term that I keep hearing is quality over quantity. I would rather live my life the way that I want to live it. And then if I die at 45 from COVID, or if I die at 50 from COVID, at least I didn't sit in my house for five years before that happened. And I just, I don't understand that way of thinking. And maybe that's the dad in me. I don't know. I mean, I want to walk my daughter down the aisle.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
You know, so it's, uh, so I don't understand that part of it, but this is, this is a grueling thing. I mean, our council out here, we had a council, an emergency session on Friday. We, this coming weekend is the annual Labor Day Festival out here in Illinois Valley. It's our once a year thing that's put on by the Lions Club and there's vendors and there's tough trucks and there's a softball tournament. There's a cornhole tournament and there's grease pole and there's, there's all these other small businesses that are scheduled to come in. The money is already put out for it. And so we had to have an emergency meeting as a council on Friday to decide after this mandate came in place by Kate, whether or not we were going to allow this to happen, whether we were going to alter its, its course or whether we were going to just cancel it and then say sorry to those that are already invested in money. So we, after two plus hours worth of debating as a council and listening and opening up the microphone for people, the community, we decided to allow it, but not like it's ever been done before. There's a, there's a shop booth where you can get vaccinated at the clinic or at the festival, which is great. There's signings, you're not selling tickets to the tough trucks to anybody that's not wearing a mask. And so if you, if you want to go sit down and leechers and watch tough trucks, there'll be social distancing and mask requirement. You're not getting a ticket if you're not wearing a mask. And they, they purchased, I think they said 2,000 masks and they have dedicated mask people that would be walking around escorting people out that aren't wearing masks. And so it's, uh, there were a number of protocols that were put in place to, to hopefully make it as safe as possible. But it's again, it's a, it was a split vote. I mean, it was three, two, to, to allow it to happen. So it's, it's weighing on everybody.
It's a tough one, man. Like just even for like Brit and concert and concerts in general, I mean, any gathering in general, we don't know the effect of how much this is going to spread outdoors. You know, there's differentiating difference of opinions of it spreads more so indoors than it does outdoors. I've seen a lot of reports where huge outdoor concerts are having just massive super spreaders. So who knows?
And that's, that's, I think in part, if not the biggest part is the information we do have helps, but there's so much information that is still not there, like factual, factual information on this whole pandemic and this epidemic and, and this virus. There's still so many questions regarding it because we don't have solid answers. People, they don't know what to think. You got one side and you got the other and they're not respecting each other.
Yeah. Somehow we got to get down the middle and just, you know, we can still agree to disagree, but we've got to work together. And that's, that's kind of what I want to, I'm trying to push is have a little understanding, you know, if, if you're going to go out, wear a mask, be respectful to people wearing a mask.
I, I made a post before this variant had hit. I made a post because I was still, you know, going around the community grants pass, you know, Medford here in Cave Junction. And I, you know, even when there was no longer a mask mandate, I always had one in my pocket. And if I ever came even remotely close to somebody that was wearing a mask, I put it on as respect to them. And so it's, I think it's, it's one of those things where people have forgotten how to be friendly to other people. And if you disagree, then they're ultimately looked on as if they're, they're lower than you or they're, they're your enemy in some way. It's just that division is our entire country. And it's, I mean, it's, it's COVID related, related. It's political. There is, there is no unity here right now.
It's the culture. I mean, you look at, look at Japan, they, they've been wearing masks for years and years and years and years and years, period. It's part of their culture. No one looks down on them. They don't fight about it. That's just a normal way of life. And I've said it before, I've said it so many times. Yes, we are the land of the free. We have our freedom. But with that freedom comes great responsibility. I hate to sound like Spider-Man and Peter Parker and his uncle and everything right here, but you know what I mean? You know, we have the freedom. It's our responsibility to protect each other in these times. It's not the first time this happened, but it's the first time where the world is such a smaller place because of the internet.
I think conversations need to be understood a little bit better by people. A lot of times, you know, someone says, get the vaccine or get the, or you know, wear a mask. But there's kind of three steps to a conversation. First, you've got to determine what are the facts? Like what's your foundation for understanding? Do you guys agree on, like when I was talking to Herman or Dan, it's like, first question is, what's the situation? Do you agree that, do we agree that the hospital's full? Do we agree that COVID is causing it? Like, do we even have a foundation to work from? And then what are your goals? Are your goals to keep businesses open? Are your goals to keep the hospital completely empty? You know, what are you actually trying to do? And then once you've got that figured out and you can both agree on that, then you can talk about things that you could do to reach those goals. But if you, if you're talking to someone about, we need to shut things down and their goal is to keep business open, you're just going to be ships in the night. It's not going to work.
Right. Yeah. I suggested to, um, let's set up a vaccine site, Wednesday, our Saturday, Sundays at the fairgrounds. Kind of like what they do in Medford, just to create more awareness. And again, was told, oh, we only had 49 people get vaccinated at the fair. Well, of course you did. You have a bunch of people at the fair that are anti-maskers, anti-vaxers that, that just don't care. We're not, I don't, I don't think that Josephine County is doing enough awareness as far as advertising. We're not, I, I don't, I don't think that Josephine County is doing enough awareness as far as advertising, social media posts. We're relying on the state stuff that's coming in, not our own personal stuff.
I know they turned down the half billion dollars, but they said they already had money because they weren't spending it to help. Um, but again, uh, it's, it's not like we're, you know, in Vermont where everybody would get a vaccine if they knew about it. We live in a place where it's just a very strong medical freedom community. People, uh, want to make their own choices. If you tell them to do something that they may have done otherwise, they won't do it. It's, it is a unique area that we can't just say, well, if they knew more about the vaccines, they'd take them. That's, uh, not the vast majority of the people that haven't gotten one, weren't just waiting for FDA approval necessarily. Like there's, there's people that are, and I think we've seen like a seventeen percent jump nationwide is the latest number I've seen, but locally, uh, so many people aren't going to get the vaccine until someone they know gets really sick. Uh, and even then they may not. It's just that strong of a personal decision for so many people here. And so in that case, when I was, sorry, when I was talking to like Herman and Dan, I was saying, throw the vaccine out. Like yes, keep advertising that, but when we're talking about potential solutions to help out the current situation, you can't just say, well, people won't take the vaccine. So we're going to do nothing. There's, there's other things we could do with the messaging that, you know, and then Herman said, you know, he posted that simple thing saying, go to the website to learn about the crisis. And he said he got roasted for that. I didn't see it on his Facebook page, but he gets emails and calls from all sorts of people. And people thought that was too much. So again, it would just, it is a, uh, being a leader in Josephine County with all the different areas that are so different. Um, it's a very tough job.
Well, locally and nationally, I, I just don't think people like being told what to do. You know, it's, I don't, I hate it. You know, I hate when some, but I don't look at it. I didn't look at the vaccine, um, as something because I got it before it was mandated. People hate being told what to do. And it's, you know, I, I feel like there is a massive backlash locally when it comes to the vaccine and the mask wearing. Because it's coming down the ladder, like it's something that's, that's being forced upon you. And it's, uh, it, they're no longer being given that choice. You know, it's the state workers, healthcare, teachers, um, you know, those, those are the people that we are going to be relying on the most going forward. And now you're telling them they don't have a say. And though my personal opinion may be that they need to get vaccinated, that is my personal opinion. I'm vaccinated, but I'm not going to sit there and tell them they have to get vaccinated. That's not my job. That's, uh, that's not what any of us should be doing. And when you throw that mandate word around, we are mandating that vax, you know, vaccines are going to be mandatory and we're going to mandate that masks are going to be worn. People like to, uh, like to buck the system and that created an avenue for them to do so.
Yeah. I think mandating it was probably the worst thing the governor could have done. I think that's going to be more catastrophic than people not getting the vaccine, just because it's going to hurt the healthcare system, hurt the school system.
Yeah. Absolutely. Like, like Bradley mentioned earlier, if you have, if you hadn't, didn't mandate it, didn't tell someone that they had to do it. And maybe just strongly recommended through media and all the outlets and TV and whatnot, you know, news conferences and gave them the choice. I bet you our percentages of vaccinated people would have been higher because again, they weren't told what to do. And while that may, may be childish and stubborn, uh, and not necessarily smart. Yeah, that's my stance. I, I agree. I, I'm vaccinated, throwing it out there. I was one of those that I wouldn't say I was anti-vax by any means, but I was very skeptical and wanted to get, you know, I wanted to see how time went, et cetera, et cetera. But again, I got kids and I got a, a woman who is very immune compromised and it, that there was no question after that, you know, it is my responsibility and my duty to do what I can to protect those around me, especially my family. And then after that, it was no question whatsoever. And I just wish more people would think that way.
My wife being a nurse in the hospital, um, she, you know, pregnant during the pandemic. And so we talked to our OB-GYN and said, should she get this? Um, you know, very early on, and you know, when the healthcare workers could get it for no one else, you know, like, yeah, absolutely. The, everything looks great. We had our, honestly, the least difficult baby ever, like, you know, we're very short labor left the next day, uh, compared to our first daughter who we had to go to the NICU for ten days. Uh, it was a breeze and perfectly healthy, sleeps great, healthy as a, I mean, just no problems. Again, totally anecdotal, but there's a lot of people that like, you know, being me, I'm an engineer. Um, I kind of hate all that anecdotal stuff because it's so worthless, honestly, like in the science grand scheme of things, but stories are what a lot of people who haven't gotten vaccinated yet are going off of like, well, I heard this, I heard that. So the more stories we can tell of, I got vaccinated and I got a sore arm for a day and I took a nap and I was fine. I, I'm, uh, what five, I got mine back in April and it was no problem. Um, I've been around people who had COVID and I still don't have it. I'm doing great. Like those kinds of stories are so boring and mundane that you don't hear them. Whereas like, well, I had a friend who got vaccinated and died the next day.
The one in a thousand, the one in ten thousand.
One in, uh, yeah, one in a hundred, well, one for deaths, like the confirmed deaths from the COVID shots is like three from the Johnson and Johnson. And yeah, Barry says a lot, but when you vaccinate, uh, two hundred plus million people, there's going to be a lot of correlation. And so those are the stories that people are going to pick up on and say, well, this was a correlation. So it means it was caused and they're going to get all up in it. But the more stories we can tell of just the mundane, yeah, I got vaccinated and I'm fine. Those are, I think valuable at this point in the game.
I, uh, we had our daughter in April of twenty twenty, C-section. Um, no vaccine at the time. It was, it was different. Our fourth and final kid and it was unlike any, uh, any of the others. Um, family couldn't be there. It was, it was tough, but it's, uh, I got vaccinated in February. My wife went with me. She had qualified to get it and, uh, our medical provider at the time said, I suggested Jesse get it. And I suggest that he, she suggested my wife didn't. Uh, my wife at the time still is breastfeeding and in April, there, there just wasn't enough information on, you know, the two. And we got a call three weeks ago from the same medical provider saying, hey, research has been done. You're good to go. And she got her first shot two weeks ago. So it's, you know, trusting the right people, asking the right questions, contacting healthcare professionals and letting them guide you on a health decision. It's way better than, you know, pulling your facts off of a meme.
Right. Yeah. I think that was probably the.
That it doesn't have the answers.
Said too, was check.
There's a Reddit subreddit, COVID nineteen. Uh, if you, that's all medical papers. I search that all the time. So that subreddit's great.
So yeah, you know, my, my, my vaccine thing was just talking to every guest that we've had on and getting, you know, the ones that were willing to talk about it, get their perspective on it. Just people of different walks of life, different parts of the country. Different doctors I've talked to, because I, I was totally against it. I was, you know, on the fence of is COVID real? Is this the government thing? Is this, you, what, what is this? Wait, are they trying to take control of us? You know, what's going on? All the conspiracy crap and in, after tons of research and just thinking about, I got vaccinated. I'm super happy I did. Um, and you, there's, you know, no issues. I did the Johnson and Johnson, no issues at all. I'm still alive. Haven't turned into a zombie. So.
Yeah.
There's that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, yeah.
I think a lot of, I think a lot of that stems from the panic that happened early on, you know, and I'm talking about it, the government, local and nationally, they panicked.
Well, yeah, they, you know, they were just as clueless as everyone else.
Right. And it's, uh, I think the, the rate that they panicked has been something that has driven where we are now. It's, uh, if they wouldn't, you know, but I understand why. I understand why they shut down. I understand the limitations that were being put on, but like Brad had said, you know, he, they came out a little hot and it's, uh, I, I think that that, that as much as anything is why people are are going against it currently.
When, uh, just to clarify that, I honestly think like early on, they needed to be even hotter. Like I was, I called up Dandy Young. I'm like, Dan, everything's shut down anyways. Just put a sheriff at the, uh, the exit, say, get your gas and leave. If you don't live here, we're all just going to take it, really chill for a little bit, but not indefinitely. You need to do that until you get testing. And as soon as you have testing that says, look, we don't have COVID here, open everything up and just run entirely normally, you know, mask and social distance as you can, run entirely normally. Um, and you know, they've kind of pushed back like, well, you know, Kate put, uh, shut us down for all these things. If we had taken it very seriously and when any situation pops up that says, you know, the COVID drives it again, we take that seriously. We don't have to abdicate power to the state because the state can look at us and say, hey, you're taking this seriously. You do you. That's kind of what we needed to do then. I mean, I, I was saying, shut everything down in March and by April I was saying, open everything up. That's the quick turnaround. We, we should not have stayed shut down through the summer when there was very little COVID spreading. It just makes no sense. It just turns people off. Now that we have it everywhere, the time to shut down was August first.
Well, and that's, that was my point is, you know, going through the summer panicking, going happy with no answers. You know, there was, there was nobody giving us any, any information besides the fact that we're in a state of emergency and you're working from home, collecting unemployment and not going out to eat. You know, that's, that's what we were told. There were, there were no other answers besides that.
Yeah. The other thing to look at too, is when the, the extra unemployment money runs out next month or this month, what happens when all those people go back to work and they're working through being sick? They've got a fight or flight. Me, mentality now of, oh my gosh, I gotta make this money. And you know, now you've got it, where I don't think we're going to have enough of a lull or enough herd immunity yet to, it, over the next two to three weeks to have all these people that are going to get back in the workplace, going to work sick. And then I, I feel like we're going to have another spike in like November.
You know, the, the thing about the unemployment though, is you look at Oregon's numbers, we're like at five some percent. It's not that high. Like it's not like we're ever at ten percent and everyone's just sitting on the government dole. There's not a ton of people on unemployment right now. So my question, which I haven't gotten good numbers on, how many people are medically unable to work right now due to COVID? Or whatever, uh, how, you know, we've got all the problems with, we're not able to put people into the, um, the long-term living, you know, the, the care facilities. Is that, is that because the census is high or is it because the staffing's low or both? Um, you know, we have a lot of people that got COVID, got long COVID that, you know, struggle to walk upstairs now. I'm not saying that's everybody that COVID, but it is a considerable number. I just, I don't see the unemployment number alone causing the insane shortage we have right now. I, I feel like there's increased demand. Um, there's a lot of complicated factors, more than just people are sitting at home on Kate's dime, our dime.
Yeah. It's, it's a little strange. I mean, it's, you know, every restaurant, like I, I went to go pick up some food last night at a restaurant in Grants Pass and the, the only people working were the owners. It was the husband and wife and the people in there were like extremely rude, which and was a video I posted earlier today, but it's, it's just like, man, like I, I don't, I just, I don't get where, where is everybody? It's like, you know, there, every restaurant is short-staffed. It seems like every store, Walmart is extremely short-staffed of, there's nobody to stock shelves. Where is everybody?
Right. And where, granted, a good portion of those were or are collecting unemployment, but why haven't they returned yet?
Yeah.
When there's more workers, there's more workers now in Oregon than there were at the start of the pandemic. Like there's more people working. Where like, you know, I've seen a lot of people say that they're at better jobs for themselves. You know, there's a lot more jobs in the distribution, like the delivery networks, um, you know, more people doing, working for Amazon, different things like they're, they're doing that or did they work from home? Are there, um, you know, I've seen a lot of people say that they just reevaluated what they want to do with their lives and they don't want to work in fast food because you get terrible pay, terrible hours. And so they found jobs elsewhere. And that would be a really interesting deep dive from a reporter where they don't just take the easy answer of, oh, everyone's on unemployment. Like no, where actually are people? Take a sample of, you know, a hundred people just randomly that they're able to call up and say, what's your current status? Why are you working? Are you not working? Are you working the same job? Did you go to a different job? What's the story? That's such an unknown that I feel too many people just take the easy answer of, oh, they're just sitting on unemployment. And I just don't think that's the case.
Interesting. And that, and I, and it's a good point. I've only seen it really in, uh, retail and food. And not all retail, you know, the bigs, the big stores, you know, the Walmarts, um, and into anything fast food, which by the way, I'm not trying to eat as much anymore, but, uh, uh, yeah, it's, that's where I see where it's hit, but anywhere else I tend to go, there's, there's people working. Heck, I went to the doctor's office this morning. They were doing fine.
On the hospital, they're struggling to get nurses and doctors and, you know, a lot of that's burnout, a lot of that, I mean, it, people haven't quit yet for the vaccine mandate. So it's not like that's caused it yet. Um, yeah, that is, that is something that one of the, the big media outlets really needs to dive into. Where are the people?
Along the, uh, the state mandate that's coming down for vaccines with nurses and, uh, and state workers. I mean, you know, from DHS to nurses in the hospital, it's going to be interesting and scary to see what's going to happen when that deadline hits. I've got a very close friend who, uh, who works for the state and she was anti-vaccine and she already had COVID. So she got COVID. It, uh, didn't affect her greatly. Her entire family did. She, uh, she got through relatively easily considering, but she, uh, she didn't want to get the vaccine even after having COVID and she had, uh, she has decided to get the vaccine because the alternative is to not be able to support her family. Um, but it's, you know, there, that's not going to be the case for everybody. There's, there's going to be a drop off in an industry that's already shorthanded.
That's what I've said, what Kate could do, should do, um, is the whole antibody testing, which even that isn't perfect because viruses still get around that. But if she were to say to healthcare workers, you know, anyone that is subject to the mandate who hasn't been vaccinated, but thinks that they may have already had COVID, submit to antibody testing within two weeks. The, the reason why she hasn't done the antibody testing yet is because it could lead to COVID parties where people like, hey, I'm just going to get COVID the natural way. And then one percent of those people die. You don't want to do that. But, um, to get the people who already have had COVID and don't necessarily need the vaccine, even though the vaccine would help them additionally, it may be sufficient to just do that. We could keep a lot of workers who, cool, you've got the antibodies, you get a free pass. We're just going to be in such a crisis.
As scary as a situation as it might be where people do the COVID party thing and try to get the natural immunity from the, uh, from the antibodies that, that can't be your reasoning to not do it. You know, it's, I, I think the pros of allowing antibody testing for those people, if it, if that's what's needed to keep nurses and doctors in the hospital and.
Not doctors.
Or nurses, or nurses in the hospital.
Doctors are vaccinated.
Right. So, but if it's, uh, nurses, other, uh, other providers to the state, if that's what it's going to take to keep those people in that infrastructure that is desperately needed, why are we not already doing that? You know, that's, that's the question I would have.
Good question. Speaking of which, Nick, have you even gotten through that list of questions, man?
No, we're, we're getting there though. So I'm going to ask a tough one for you guys. Um, what do you guys think about the sheriff stance that he issued? On the mask mandate, not enforcing.
Quantificating. Kate didn't ask him to do anything. OSHA does stuff. He, he hasn't been asked to do anything. So he has a lot of people saying, you need to put out a letter to say that you're going to do this. It was just posturing. It means nothing. Uh, there was nothing he was asked to do and he lives in a community that wanted him to say that. So he did. That's my, that's my take.
I agree completely. It's, uh, it's not something the way that the mandate was set down. It's not something that falls under his jurisdiction to, uh, to enforce. And so he, uh, I feel like he did the letter to slow the calls down because I know there were a lot of calls and emails on what is the sheriff's stance. But I legally, he doesn't have one there. And so it, you know, that one was an easy answer for me.
All right. So.
Quantificating, such a great word. All right, Nick, next.
So yeah, so to follow up with that one, how do you propose our local businesses work with the mask mandate as OSHA will be finding them? If they were to go in and check, which I personally have seen for my previous job, we did get fined because a customer called and said one of the other customers was not wearing a mask. OSHA showed up a couple of hours later and gave us a fine because they actually found another customer not wearing a mask and we weren't forcing it because we were afraid. Like it was seriously, people were being mean. We've got threatened. We were going to get shot. Like there's, how, how do you enforce that? How, how is that even?
So for me, you know, as I'm a small business owner, I share a, a pretty large size office with, uh, another gentleman that does a lot of the same stuff that I do. We, uh, we work well together, but we, we decided early on that we were going to switch to an appointment only and mandate masks be worn when they come in to, uh, to prevent that. And so our front door stays locked. And they come in, we, we don't offer a walk-in service currently. And so you can get ahold of us via phone, via email, through the website, through chat. There, there are enough ways in today's day and age to communicate without walking in. And if, as sad as it is to say, if we lose those two or three customers that refuse to wear the mask for my family, I'm okay with that. And so it's, uh, that's, that's how I handle it.
Okay.
And I've ninety-nine percent of my business is over the phone, online. I, I get maybe five people in my shop in a week, even though I'm right downtown. Um, so I mean, I'm, I'm in a unique position where it just, I've got one employee, like it, it's not the same, but there's a lot of other businesses locally that it's tough. It's frustrating when the government wants something to happen and they push the blame onto the business. Um, where, you know, like the local businesses, local business offices, they're going to have to let people go because of the mandate, even though it's the government causing it, they're going to be taking the blame from the people who like. Because of the mandate, even though it's the government causing it, they're gonna be taking the blame from the people who like. Why do you, why are you firing me? You know, they're, they're passing the buck. Um, I think either mandated across the board. And, you know, find individuals rather than businesses, um. I, it's just a tough spot. I mean, you wish people would take personal responsibility and just do the right thing.
Well, for me, I, yeah, I don't agree with OSHA fining any establishment for what a customer is doing. I don't feel like that's right. If the employees are following the mandate and they're masked up and they're social distancing and they're sanitizing the way. For OSHA to levy a fine for an individual, a patron that chooses to come in that store or that business and. And operate, I don't feel is right. I mean, there are people that get tickets for jaywalking all the time, right? And so it's, uh, I'm not saying ticket. The people that are not coming in, but finding the establishment when the employees are doing what they're supposed to be doing is not right.
I agree. Yeah, like Walmart's like the hardest one. Or I was, I actually had to go get milk for the baby the other night and. Noticed a younger guy with a gun on his hip. Arguing with the greeter at Walmart about the mask. And, and she was just like in tears. And I'm like, man, this is ridiculous. You know, you're being asked to do something that. It's, it's impossible to enforce in this town. And it's, it's heartbreaking just to see this nice older lady just getting totally belittled by some little punk with. This thinks he knows everything.
Well, I don't just think it's our town. I think that this is a, a national problem. I, uh, I drove my son. My oldest son's in the army and he got stationed, uh, in Maryland and his car was here. So we did a cross-country trip about a month ago to get him moved there. And so it's, I got to see a lot of the country that I'd never seen. And it's, it's a lot like it is here everywhere. And so you, you have those believers, you have those non-believers and it's, it's pretty obvious to tell which side of the line that they're on, you see.
And I know a local business owner out in Ivy actually who just got his booster shot because he is. Yeah, dealing with so many people on a day-to-day basis. He just wanted to have every layer of protection he possibly could.
Yes, sign me up. When's my booster available? Come on.
Right.
I called yesterday, it was four, two months.
Any more, Nick?
Um, no, that's, that's actually it. That's all the, that's, we, we covered everything. So.
We can, we can always do a fast five with these guys real quick to mellow out the mood.
I didn't come up with a fast five.
Okay, I'll, I'll do it. You guys, you guys ready for a little? Yeah. You're stuck on an island somehow and there's all the food you can ever eat, but you can only take one DVD. Because somehow there's electricity and a TV on this island. What movie or TV show are you bringing?
Uh, Survivor Man, easy.
Well, maybe figure a way to get off that island too.
Yeah, Les Stroud lives locally.
All right. What about you, Jesse?
That one's easy, friends.
Yeah, see, you, you, my lady would get along just fine. And no, normally there's five of those questions, but we're, we're, I think I want to save those for when you guys, we have you on. Dadcast and talk about being dads. Jesse, Brad, business owner, councilman, uh, thank you so much for, uh, taking time out of your day. I guess now is the time. Is there anything else you would like to add before we, uh, we shut this one down for the day?
Actually, I got one more. Just in, in closing, Brad, Jesse, what? Would you suggest our fellow citizens do to stay safe, get through this next few weeks? That's, uh, that's my last question.
Uh, I'd say hunker down. Just. Visit with as few people as possible, stay away from crowds, stay away from, you know, watch church online. It just sit tight for a little while. Things, don't do anything that's gonna break your leg, you know, don't do some extreme sports stuff right now. Just try, as, as seriously as you ever took COVID, if you ever took it seriously. Take it that seriously right now. If you live in Josephine County or Jackson County, it, it's just, it's really, really bad out there right now.
Mine would be to, uh, talk to your healthcare providers, make educated decisions.
Easy peasy. And, 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 and to finish this, my, my thoughts. I don't get why people are so hesitant to hunker down, to stay at home. Man, I got video games. I've got a giant TV with everything in the world I could possibly watch. I've got this amazing computer in front of me with the world's information at my fingertips. My kids are home with me. I can order food delivered to me. I don't need to go to the grocery store. It, it. It ain't that bad, you guys. And you wanna go outside, fine. Step out your front lawn. Do some jogging, do some jumping jacks. You can go outside. Just two, three weeks, man. That's all we're asking. It's not that bad. It isn't that bad. We've done it before. You can do it again, right? All right, gentlemen, you guys have been amazing. Thank you so much for your time today. Um, whoever, anyone watching this video, thank you, of course, for, uh, checking it out. Uh, if you're, uh, watching on the YouTube platform, please subscribe, like, comment, hit the bell, all that good stuff. Um, and we will see you on another episode, a more lighthearted, uh, no, yes, a more lighthearted. I messed that up last time. A more lighthearted episode of Dadcast is coming real soon. Gentlemen, thank you. Have a kick-ass rest of your day and thanks for coming on Dadcast.